So I'd like to introduce our Vice President Beth Hofer, who my understanding is will begin our meeting and as gives Matt a few minutes to join us.
All right. Please bear with me. This is a total surprise. I've never done this before. I'd like to call the board to a special hearing on Code of Conduct. And maybe start this meeting by, oop, not talking into it, saluting the flag.
So Beth, would you like to be to take it from here?
Well, if you could read the Code of Conduct, because I don't have it.
No, what we're going to do is this, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rude, who's going to make some additional comments, and then we'll open it up to the public hearing this evening. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear from anyone in the public who would like to make comments about the Code of Conduct or the recommended changes. After this evening, we will take those comments in consideration, and we'll be coming back to the Board for additional discussion on June 21st. And depending on that discussion, we'll either adopt the new Code of Conduct on June 21st, or we will adopt it at our annual organization meeting on July 11th. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rude.
Hi, everyone. I'll just be, I'll just be brief here. I wanted to give you a little bit of the philosophy behind the edits in this document, and what we did to get it to where it is right now, and to know that there's still some edits to be made, and some changes that we have to do, but wanted to get this out sooner than later. This Code of Conduct is the most comprehensive document. Of its nature, each school district from this document will put together a more simplified version for the school, but it would come off of the tenants of this document. So what we tried to do was first and foremost, take a look at the New York State School Board Association's samples to see what was, what types of language was there. We need to reflect updates for the Dignity for All Students Act, DASSA Project Save legislation, and Section 100.2 of the Commissioners' Regulations. So there are some changes in this that reflect that. And what we also did was we took a pretty comprehensive look at about 17 Code of Conducts from the region to see, get a sense of their wording, if there was anything we were missing. Yeah, I know the context of Chatham is, it's specific to our community, but we wanted to have a holistic view. So what you're seeing in this is, I think arguably not finished, but we wanted to do a substantial overhaul from what has happened in the past. So you're going to see some expanded definitions in there. You'll see some clear expectations with essential partners. You will see dress code, which is, I anticipate, there's some conversation around dress code. There's some conversation, there's changed language about dress code. And we changed some language in terms of penalties going to consequences. And also did an audit to see if we were accurately reflecting any updates in Chatham Board policies. So that's, that's where we're at. We look forward to some feedback. And I'll be writing down questions and getting back to anyone who has them.
Yes, also, we sent a survey out to students, too.
Yeah, so there, there is, there was a survey that was sent out to students. They had an opportunity to contribute to it. That was done by Mr. Burns. I think we'd like to have further discussion with students with it. So yes, that's, that's included. And I, I guess the one thing that I just want to say about dress code is, is I think that it's a topic that people feel very strongly about. And we're trying to keep dress code very simple and keep it aligned with NISBA. That's, that is our, our stance on dress code for this. So just so you have an idea of where we're at.
Copies of the full document, which juxtapose the new and old language side by side, are available, attached to Board docs on the meeting agenda. And we do have a couple copies here should anyone want to look at it. Is anyone here tonight here to speak on, at the public hearing for the Code of Conduct? And while you're, while we're giving moments, a few moments to the public, is there anyone online who would like to raise their hand and speak to any elements of the Code of Conduct during the public hearing? Beth, I'm not seeing anyone online or in public. So I think at this point you could adjourn the hearing.
Okay, at this time, I would like to adjourn the hearing on the Code of Conduct. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you do that, someone just did raise their hand online, so I, maybe we could hold off on that. And I will promote this individual who may want to make some comments. Ms. Sanchez, I'm going to promote you in a second here. You can unmute your microphone. We should be able to hear you in the room.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, so there were just a couple things in the new Code of Conduct that were a little concerning. I don't have it up in front of me at this very moment. I could get it quickly. But it has to do with if a student needs to be questioned or searched. Actually, here we go. I have it here. It just, it basically says that, you know, you can do that without a parent. And it actually talks about strip searching, which didn't used to be in the Code of Conduct. So that's concerning. I don't like that, you know, if my child was to go back to Chatham, that if there was something going on and you weren't able to get ahold of my husband or I, that you would go ahead and question him and potentially strip search him. I would like to understand why we now feel the need to have that in the Code of Conduct when that wasn't before. In fact, before, it says that if you can't get ahold of the parents, that nothing will happen, that they will not be questioned. And I wish I had it highlighted here. I kind of wasn't really ready for this. But it's in there, and it says that, you know, you can be doing this without us even knowing it as parents, that you'll send us a letter if you're not able to get ahold of us. So I didn't even read the entire thing in its entirety, but that part right there, I thought was very concerning. So I don't know if you're about to like pass at this minute, but if you are, you might want to wait a second and look into that a little more, because I'm sure if more parents were aware of that, they, they wouldn't be okay with it. They'd be very uncomfortable with it.
Let me just comment. So we're not passing it this evening.
Oh, good.
Just a public hearing to hear concerns and questions. We're not going to respond specifically to any. We're just taking them down.
Big note on that.
Let me reassure you, however, that any of the language in the Code of Conduct follows New York State Public Education law. And specifically regarding the search of students and due process rights, we would follow that to the letter of the law. But we will take, I'm sorry.
I just don't understand why we need to do that now. We never had that before, and now we're doing it.
Well, again, one of the purposes of redoing the Code of Conduct is to be much clearer and more specific about the actions that we will take.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a very big contrast. Before it was, we will not question our child or do anything without you being informed. Now it's, we will do it regardless. So that's a big difference.
Xena, this is Matt.
Hi, Matt. How are you?
Good. So I did hear your comment. I was a couple minutes late. If you have other things here, you know, the Code of Conduct is quite long. If you have like another minute, if you want to bring up another issue. Otherwise, what I would say is, please put your comments in writing, because I'm sure you can be more thorough than the time we have available for you today. And that, that's the whole purpose of this public hearing, is to make sure we get people's feedback.
Okay, well, I can definitely put that in writing as well. So there, there's my feedback. Thank you for listening and have a good evening.
Thank you. Let me just check briefly to see if there's any other. I don't see if any, any other hands online. And last call here. Matt, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So with no other hands up, we, we are going to adjourn the, the public hearing here. Again, this was really just an opportunity to collect feedback in addition to being required as we update the Code of Conduct. Having this hearing, it allowed us to put, put the new Code of Conduct out there to the public so we can get some feedback. We are going to have a couple more weeks here to collect that feedback, and we'll do another reading and adoption in a few weeks. So we're gonna move on. Can I have a motion to approve the present agenda? All in favor? Thank you. We, we covered the Code of Conduct public hearing, but we do have another public comment slot here. This public comment is for public stakeholders that, district stakeholders that would like to comment on today's agenda. There will be a third comment offering in this, this meeting at the end of the public agenda, which will be open for any issues regarding the school district. But for this one, we're asking that comments be limited to the present agenda. So if you do want to speak, go ahead and raise a digital hand or an actual hand here in the room, and we'll give you a couple minutes to speak. And I'll, I'll just give everyone a moment to indicate that if they would like. Digital hands, right? Okay, so if you, if you were searching for that digital hand, it's down at the bottom of your screen. If you raise it between now and the end of the meeting, we'll grab you in the next public comment window. Board comment. A full board here today. Does anyone want to comment on current happenings? Ariel? Microphone? That's great. I really enjoyed the, the last one. We were able to. Beth, I think you had a comment as well, right?
After hearing, you know, on the math situation, I've heard what the teacher has said, and I've also talked to a couple of parents who are still have questions about it. I was wondering if there was some point that we could talk with Jen Delorio as a board, just to get a full take on what the decision is based upon. The accelerated math being.
Well, this is a kind of a year-end update. And so I would, the answer to that is absolutely. And I know, obviously, Jen is one of the math teachers who helped the administration facilitate this. But what I would do is, after tonight's meeting, I'll go back to our administrators and ask them to respond at the next meeting. That may be, we also have Jill Chittin, who's our teacher leader in math. And I'll leave it up to our high school administration to decide how best to brief you on, on where we stand with that. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. John, you okay with that? And I know Jen's connected, and she's been awful helpful in talking to individual parents over the last week or so. So as a team effort, I think we can do an adequate job to bring you all up to date, make you feel comfortable with the decisions that have been made.
So once again, Chatham has moved forward in the baseball RC competition here. Just a couple of things that I saw that I really wanted to just mention, because I appreciate the spirit of it. Number one is a parade that happened to escort the kids out of town. Unexpected, and just shows that community support was a beautiful thing. Number two, you know, Scott, Coach Steltz, in that game, went deep into the bullpen, into the dugout to get some kids some playtime that, that hadn't seen a lot, knowing that he's harvesting the next year's team as well. That sort of action shows really good perspective from a coach who's seasoned and experienced this. And finally, so many of our staff, so much of our community has turned out, even at an hour, hour and a half, three and a half hours carries them over. But, uh, but it's just really great to see the kids supported in this way. I feel personally touched that, you know, my son's on the team. But, you know, thank you to everyone who is showing such support to the, to the team and to the community at this point. This is possibly a one in a lifetime experience for me.
Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move into the Student Representative Report from Mia Port.
Okay, so first, I'll give a recap of Arbor Day. So we did a lilac bush, which is different from our traditional tree, for Maureen DePew, who works at the Chatham High School. We wanted, the senior class wants to wish her well in her retirement. Moving on to other things, the Krispy Kreme is delivered tomorrow. That's our student government fundraiser, and that's always pretty successful. So we're excited for that. And then senior trip happened today. Unfortunately, the boat broke. But I'm very proud of our advisors and administration for getting us a spot at June Farms. And we had a lovely day with like the animals and June Farms and April Park. Yeah, it was really nice. Yep. And then tomorrow, the remaining capstone presentations are for, are happening for the AP students. So that's really exciting, because a lot of us went through that at the beginning of this year, but they're going through it later. We all wish them well. And then, as Ms. Faxon said, the Point Art and Literary Magazine was awesome and a big, like, good job to all the people that participated in that, because the artwork and writing was really quite spectacular. And I'm really glad that Chatham has an emphasis on the arts, too. And then the baseball team, they play Friday night at Binghamton in their first round of states. So we're all very proud of them and wish them luck. And then, um, this is actually my last meeting, but I just wanted to touch on graduation. There will be a graduation parade this year. I will send, I will send in more details that can be announced at the later meeting, but we're really excited for that, and we hope the community shows up. And then, this is the most important thing on my report tonight. Tomorrow is Senior Expo Night at 6:00. And we really encourage as many people as we can to come. This is going to be the first one in like two years, and the seniors have worked so hard for this. And it's basically kind of showing off our accomplishments and what we've done. And I'm just very proud of all my peers and also the senior team for helping us out, get that together. And it is open to the public in the CHS auditorium, so I encourage everyone to come to that. Yeah, yeah, no, sorry, not the auditorium. I meant the gym. Yeah, but it's. Yeah. 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 Six, yeah. Yeah, so you can come. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
We could, we could go out of order here.
Oh, okay, I had a little speech that I wanted to do, if that was okay.
Yes, please.
It's very, it's very brief, but it's my last one, so I thought, why not? Okay, so throughout my 12 years at Chatham Central School District, I've had many experiences outside of the classroom that taught me so much. I can say that with full confidence, being on the Board was the one that taught me the most. I am so honored and grateful that I had this opportunity that allows me to represent my peers and the student body of Chatham while also working with individuals from the school and community. It's important for student voices to be heard, recognized, and accounted for as they are our future. And I know whoever will be fulfilling this role next year will do a great job of that. As the 2021-2022 school year comes to an end, one thing I want the Board to ask themselves in the time ahead is, what can I do to help make this district continuously improve and provide the best atmosphere for students and faculty? I want to thank Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Loomis, my advisors, and Dr. D'Angelo and Mr. Thorson, who all guided me through this position throughout the year. After June 24th, I will be proud to call myself a Chatham alum. I have enjoyed working with everyone and wish you all the best next school year.
Thank you, Mia. A couple of the Board members got together here, I think.
Thank you.
I actually don't know the full story, but.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for serving us this year. So find some water, I guess. We do a photo, I think?
Yeah.
It's a backdrop here, you think, the books? Okay. Let's get our, let's get, um, let's get our officers up here, Beth.
So also, since we have another prop, we'll, we'll start with giving that to you first, and then I just wanted to make a couple comments. But you can also hold this in your other hand. So I can't remember. So just on behalf of the, of the Board and the entire school district, Mia, you've been amazing. We've had some great students represent the student body over the last several years. And you all represent our school district so extremely well. And so we wish you the best in your future endeavors. And we know we're going to hear good things in the future. So please stay in contact with us.
Yeah, okay. I'm off, offbeat tonight. No, I got one. All right, we're going to move on into our tenured teachers and administrators recognition. Sal, do you want to?
Absolutely. We, we haven't been always the best at doing this, and we're, and we're, we're on a mission to fix this. You know, tenure is an amazing accomplishment for our staff. And we wanted to take a moment to recognize some individuals who've worked hard over the last three or four years, depending on the probationary period, to earn this distinction. And although the official tenure dates do vary, I think a little bit, this is one of the last Board meetings of the school year where we can grant tenure, the Board can grant tenure, and then it becomes effective on the tenure date. So without further ado, I'm very pleased to announce that most are in attendance tonight. And I'd like to have them stand and be recognized. First and foremost, Brett Fortran, our Assistant Principal MED, now finishing up his fourth year with us. Brett, Brett has done a phenomenal job supporting Ms. Reno and, and also across the entire district. If you recall, Brett stepped in last year also at the tail end at the high school and helped us out in that regard. So Brett, congratulations. We really appreciate everything you do. And, and thank you from everyone here on the Board and in the school district and the community. So thank you and congratulations on your tenure. Next, Lauren Montgomery, and she had all expectations of being here this evening. She is on maternity leave. And so we first and foremost congratulate her on the birth of her second child. But something unexpectedly had come up in the family, so she isn't able to make it this evening. So we would like to also wish Lauren Montgomery a warm congratulations for receiving her tenure with our district. So how about a round of applause? We'll have her watch the video. Next, I have Kerry Martin's stand. Kerry is one of our math teachers here at the high school. Kerry, we'd like to wish you and congratulate you on your tenure here in Chatham. So thank you for your service to the school district. Next, we have Courtney Rudet from our elementary school. Courtney, I remember being part of her interview. And so I'm so happy that you joined the Chatham family. Congratulations on, on your tenure. Then next, we have Kira Thorp. Kira Howe-Thorp, because I always still think of you with your maiden name. Kira is also at our elementary school. She's a special education teacher here at MED. And Kira, thank you. I've been in the classroom several times over the last few years, and you are amazing, as all of our tenured teachers and teaching assistants are. So thank you for everything you do. Next, we have Penny Ellis. Penny, if you wouldn't mind standing. Penny Ellis is one of our teaching assistants. She'll be earning tenure as well, effective in September. So Penny, thank you for all of your hard work. And then Tara Sanders from MED. Tara, as a teaching assistant, will also receive her tenure. Tara, thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, Susan Lutz, currently one of our teaching assistants. But Susan has filled in when we needed her in the classroom and has been a wonderful addition to our, our staff here, and we wish you well on your tenure. So thank you, Susan. Again, tenure is no small accomplishment, and we congratulate everyone this evening who is, who is receiving tenure on behalf of the Board, who actually is the one who grants the tenure.
Yeah, and it's nice seeing you all in the room. We, we, we didn't do this for a couple years, so this is good. And, and by the way, we love your participation here. And of course, there's a pub coming, coming up. But for any of you teachers that want to get home for dinner, feel free to take your exits.
Yes, don't, don't feel obligated to stay till 11:00 this evening with us. John's saying, run while you can. No, no shame in that. We're encouraging it. So thank you. No, no shame in that, we were encouraging it, so thank you.
With that, we're gonna. Maybe we'll just give a second here. Thank you for coming. All right, uh, we're gonna move into updates from Dr. D'Angelo.
So I have several updates and then I'm gonna turn it over to our building administrators to do. Our highly anticipated, always welcomed, end of the year reports that I know they've worked hard on preparing. So let's see, we have um, several updates for you, I'm gonna um, gloss over a couple because they've been previously mentioned, but a shout out to Christina and Emily. The point uh, and the, and the um, gala the other evening, um, by all accounts was extraordinarily successful. That evening, we also had one of the baseball games, so there were um, there were two things, two important things going on at the same time and uh. But congratulations, uh, we'll make sure that the board gets their printed copies of that, that's always well received. Um, I also wanted to shout out to um, our track athletes this year. Um, under the direction of Rodney Stickles, um, who incidentally, John informed me, was the conference coach of the year this year. So congratulations Rodney, Rodney along with Jason Summers, Catherine Curtis, and Jim Dorado. Have led our student athletes to a very successful year. Bryson Tobias, Timmy Kendall, um, Lenny, I don't think I've left anybody off, had a great showing at the New York State qualifiers. Unfortunately, um, I believe you have to come in first place at the qualifiers to move on, but they had a good showing, in fact, Bryson Hayner. Set one of his personal, uh, personal best records, so um, how can you um, argue with that? So congratulations to our track athletes um, for um, making us proud here in Chatham. And certainly um, our baseball team, an exciting run so far. As you've heard, um, they'll play again Friday night at 7:00 PM in Binghamton and then I, and I know we're gonna be playing on Saturday as well. So hopefully we can bring home a state title. We're really excited and I, uh, from everything from the Thursday game where our MED students lined school, uh, school road, which was amazing. That was an extraordinary emotional moment to watch our youngest um, students send off our, our athletes, that was very moving and then um. From the, from the all accounts, because we were already up at the uh, game, the uh, parade um, that ushered our, our student athletes out. Um, on Saturday as well, so really exciting things going on in the area of our athletics. The other thing I didn't want to forget is our girls softball team. You know, they had a great, great year. I was, we were, when we were sitting at the Joe for the boys team, we were getting updates from Monroe um, recreational park on, on their progress. Unfortunately, the, the season came to an end for them, but up until the final game, they had an undefeated season. So I want to also congratulate uh, JB, John Brantley um, as the, as the coach and all the girls on the softball team for. A, a phenomenal um, season this year too, so um, great, go Panthers. Couple other things, uh, I, I wanted to introduce, it, it is my distinct pleasure. And, and Mike, if you wouldn't mind standing, I'd like to embarrass you for a moment. This is Mr. Mike Olson, Mike is our new director of technology. As you've, uh, as you've heard, uh, we posted the position not, not knowing um. If we could attract a, a very talented, um, experienced uh, person to the job and the committee. Unanimously felt that Mike was going to be a great fit and a great asset to the district. He's gonna start here on the 22nd, he's had an opportunity to come in and briefly meet the team and, and will be back. And, and Mike, we couldn't be more thrilled and um, and looking forward to Dr. Rudinai and the administrative team to work with you and. Moving our technology, instructional technology program and our infrastructure. Get it, getting it back on track and uh, getting it to the point where we know it can be and, you know, we know you have a great team behind you, one of your. Your own is sitting right here with us and, and so we know we're gonna have some great success moving forward, so Mike, welcome. And I know as you get to, you get to know everyone, um, you're gonna feel very welcomed here in Chatham, so thank you for joining our team. Okay, I also um, wanna just a, a shout out to our valedictorian and salutatorian, Ben Halpin and Amanda Roberts. What a great accomplishment, um, I know some of these things you can um, catch up on, on Facebook and on our website. But our congratulations go, go out to the two of them as well. Mia already mentioned the senior expo, 6:00 PM with the awards ceremony following at 7:00. The other, just kind of reminders of some other things going on, we've got the concert in the park this Thursday evening. Here at the high school, next week we have junior and national honor society uh, induction ceremonies going on and then next Friday, the 17th. It's hard to believe, but we have the eighth grade moving up ceremony located here on the football field, right Mike? Great, and then the following Friday, graduation, and I don't know if you picked up on the fact that it's coming back here to campus. That was something that the students felt very strongly about having it here, but they've, uh, John and the team have figured out how to engineer. Reverse engineer the parade, so we still have it, because that's a, that's after um, learning from the pandemic, what a great addition to the ceremony that is. They will be having the parade, uh, eight o'clock, John, I think? Yeah, eight o'clock, it'll leave from here. Okay, graduation at six, parade starts at eight, we start here and end at the fairgrounds, the reverse of what we've done the last couple of years, so with that said. Checking notes, okay, so I did want to make some comments, just some brief comments about school safety. We all know that we had um, a situation here yesterday. Um, I wanted to reassure the board and the public that school safety, school security is top of mind with the administrators and I. Um, I don't know if it's daily, but quite often we are mindful of um, our environment. And how we can continually improve uh, what we're doing through discussions and drills and evaluations so that. We could potentially fend off any um, bad events that, that might be, might be happening. We take these situations serious as by, as per the uh, communication that went out last night. The, it, it was that, it was determined by a, a collaboration with law enforcement. That there was no credible threat, but we didn't take that any less serious. And we were working through our um, a process with those involved to make sure that we um. Uh, appropriate uh, action is taken with those individuals. I want to thank our SRD, uh, who has been indispensable this year on numerous occasions, being right here uh, on campus, a quick response. And working closely with our administrative team to engage other resources um, on, on short notice and then. Yesterday, in particular, the sheriff's office, the investigative team responded in quick order and then um. And, and to help us resolve that situation. And last but not least, and you've had communications or seen communications in this regard, but we still are enjoying. Um, a heightened police presence generally from the state police and other law enforcement agencies, which is a byproduct of the governor. Asking state law, or state law enforcement to have a increased presence in our buildings, so. Thank you to our law enforcement partners for their continued support of our safety efforts uh, here in Chatham. And I think that now concludes my report, I'd be certainly welcome, certainly welcome any questions afterwards. But I'd like to turn it over, I think it's gonna be a team effort, uh, but I'd like to turn it over to our three uh, building principals, uh, Ms. Kristen Reno at the MED. Mr. Michael Burns at uh, the middle school and Mr. John Thorson, well, Mr. Burns and Mr. Thorson between the middle school and high school.
I'm just gonna, being that we have all the updates at the same time, gonna get you guys some extra mics.
Okay, so typically we talk um, about what transpired over the course of the school year. This year, we kind of worked together, looked at the board goals and we kind of narrowed them down into two specific areas that were just easier for us when we looked at things. One was wellness, um, and one was academics, so we actually did a lot of stuff together as a, as a K-12 um, district. When it came to wellness, um, and I'm not, you guys jump in at any point when you want to. But we did, um, in order to improve morale and kind of create a culture of wanting to spend time together. We created, Mike actually should take credit for that, creating a uh, district bowling team. We did several challenges um, in each building, door decorating challenges, which went over huge, the teachers love those. We got, and the kids, yes, we got back to a lot of things that we kind of had to get away with um, in the middle of COVID, like Arbor Day celebrations. That was a very, much more traditional this year than it has been in past, the past three years. We did a chili cook-off, um, kind of, it wasn't really a competition, it just turned into everybody eating chili at lunch one day. During a professional development, um, a day. And so I don't know if we want to continue on the wellness, um, I know at MED, um, we implemented our house system a couple of years ago. Where I, for those of you who don't know, we split the entire uh, building up into four colors. And each house is a color and is represented by kids from kindergarten to fifth grade. And so we did a lot of house challenges this year. A couple of years ago, we did a one-time, very large purchase of t-shirts. So every child has their house t-shirt that we just recycle year after year. Um, and they have a great time, they spend time with kids from other grades promoting community within the school. We do house challenges where we do something nice for a different color house, so we did a lot of house challenges and things to promote. Kind of wanting to work together as a community. We continue to have our Panther's Den. And that actually has become very popular in the region, we were the first school in New York State to have a Panther's Den. Um, and now we have had several schools come visit our Panther's Den. To learn about the bright program and transitioning kids who sometimes have a difficult time in the classroom. Then we did some fun things as Brett and I as administrators, we had a candy store a couple of times a year and. Pepper, don't listen to this, but we're gonna have a candy store in two weeks, don't tell your friends. We're gonna have a candy store in two weeks where every kid gets two, a certificate and they can come into, into the office and pick out any kind of candy, so. It's a very big deal in the elementary school, um, so we're really trying to promote a lot of um, activities to build community. The other thing that we did partner, um, the National Junior Honor Society, Jackie Hoffman approached me and wanted to do a lot of things at the elementary school. So they've done a lot of really cool things and they are going to be running our field day um, in two weeks, so we're super excited about that.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off that, we have done a, we always work um, in tandem anyways. I think John and I, I don't know if we're, I don't know what you'd call us, together. A lot of things, but we.
Brothers from a different mother.
We've worked extremely close, closer than I think we've ever worked before. On a, on a daily basis, so I think the three buildings, um, we've done a lot of activities together. You know, include like the, like the bowling and the door challenges. You know, we, as the year went on, we were able to bring back, we had the Queen of Hearts dance. Which was really nice to just see the kids have fun and just dance and just to kind of sit back and just watch. We haven't seen that in such a long time.
We spent the first half of the year. Trying to bring back some of the, the tradition, some of the activities under difficult circumstances with spacing and. And masks and then uh, when, when the mask maybe got lifted, I think that, to me, that was one of the biggest highlights that I probably had as an educator. Because it just felt like. Everybody could take a deep breath. And we actually started talking about not, not changing and trying to fit these things, you know, into weird places, but. We were actually able to get back to proms and dances and concerts and, and, and. It was special. At, at some point in here, I wanted to thank all of our stakeholders, I wanted to thank families, students. Everybody that's involved, it's been an incredibly difficult two and a half years. And we finally feel like. We're able to get back to business, we're able to get back and play and start planning ahead. We can get back to, you know, s- some of the work that we've done. Get back to more of the academic work, if we can get back, we can really get at some of these things because hopefully we aren't gonna be in a more stable situation moving forward. So, so to me, that mid-year. Lifting of some of the mandates was, was, was incredible. And I think you saw it in our kids.
Yeah, and it, you know, we've talked about this uh, in previous board meetings, how tough it's been on everyone. And you know, we at, at times question it. When we, we talk to each other, like, can I really continue to do this? Like, this, this is hard. And like John said, when, I'll never, I'll never forget it, when the day the kids came in. And they didn't have to wear masks anymore and they're walking in the halls and they're, some of them are trying not to smile, but they couldn't help it. Like, and it was infectious, like everyone staring at each other, just with these uh, giant smiles on their faces. And kids are walking by trying to like hide their smiles, it was uh, it was, it was, it was really cool. And you know, we were able towards the end of the year to kind of start slowly bringing some of these things back and you know, we just. We all just started Arbor Day celebrations and again, it just shows of, just a full day. Of just really fun activities um, that our teachers put together, you know, Lynn Fisher, our um. PE teacher um, did an outstanding job really organizing activities for the kids and they all just. It just shows how, what, what good kids we have. And in one thing too, you know, uh, back, I think it was about two years ago, um, New York kids came in. And um, Kristen Wilcox from University of Albany and they, they surveyed um, teachers across um, the state. And she reached out to me a couple of months ago and um, it, it was part of COVID response. So, you know, again, our teachers were surveyed during, during COVID. And I think it was 38 schools, 900 surveys, um, the middle school came out as a positive outlier from all these schools, so. That, that was really cool sharing that with the faculty. And it felt good knowing how hard and difficult it was that still things are. They're coming every day, they love their job, they love teaching, they love working with the kids, so she came in and did a um, interviewed me, um, some teachers, I think Dr. D'Angelo. And um, we're gonna be part of a case study. Through University of Albany, that'll, that'll be coming out, I'm assuming, the summer or the fall, so that was nice. Yeah, it was based on uh, innovation, adaptation, leadership, just.
Throughout the pandemic.
Throughout the pandemic.
So when we, when we were talking about academics, um. And I remember actually when I was thinking, when I was making this list, I thought of Matt who had said at one point. How much his children missed and or enjoy doing the after-school clubs and activities and how getting that back was so important. And so for the three of us, we kind of took that to heart and thought, you know what, that is super important, academics are really important, but before we go there, we just want to talk about. One of the advantages that we had this year was, we will be, we were able to bring back, if not all of our clubs, most of them. And actually at the elementary school, some of my, uh, some of the newer staff added some great um, clubs, so we had art club, drama club. We had all of our regular intramurals, which are six intramurals, we had culture club, we were able to run ski club this year, we had archery club. We had fly, we had flying deer, we had yoga club, flying deer did come in the beginning of the year and do a, a presentation with us. But then we also had some academic after-school um, clubs, which we've never really had before in an academic sense. And they went over phenomenally, we had an AIS after-school club, so students were identified by their teachers. And we sent home a letter and the response we got from parents was fantastic, they spent um. They would spend six weeks with their, with an after-school, with a teacher after-school, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then at the end of the six weeks, we would evaluate, did, did we want to keep them in and continue them and continue the hard work they're doing? Or did we want to add somebody different? And so it was a kind of a fluid program, it worked out great and I'm hoping that we can do that year after year. We did a districts, we went back to being able to do a district in-person spelling, BK, uh, K8, not K8, um, 48. Which was great, we had a um, an eighth grade winner, seventh grade, eighth grade.
We had an eighth grade.
Eighth grade winner. Just some other additional academic things at the elementary school, I, I know this is true of Mike too, we were able to add an additional academic intervention teacher, which was really important. That person really helped us be able to identify gaps um, in learning. She was able to pull small groups, um, we're gonna use her in a different capacity next year, so I'm super excited about that. But you know, we really, because we were in person, because we were able to be in the same classroom. We really spent a lot of time identifying where we need to go from here and as John had said this afternoon to us, this is a year, next year is gonna be. We haven't really had the opportunity to plan, because we never knew what the next year was going to look like, but we're pretty hopeful. That where we are now is where we're going to be next year as far as pandemic and masks and, and class sizes and so we're. Excited about what academics will look like next year. We're doing, uh, I've had a very large response to our summer school so far and we're doing a. And we're doing a little bit of a different summer school with one of our middle school teachers. Jordan is going to work between two buildings, so he's going to have some fifth graders and he's gonna help them transition to the middle school. Lisa brought letters training to the staff, even in the middle of the pandemic, we were able to provide some really intense and important literacy training. So that was great. Fifth grade still got to work with nature's classroom. They are, they were here. And we've been doing different nature's classroom activities. And the one thing that I, I feel like we did was we partnered with other districts, which we were able to do via Zoom and Google meets. But we also did a lot of internal work. Teachers were observing other teachers all the time. I have a very large untenured staff, some of them are brand new to the profession. And so they, I gave them the ability to go and visit whatever classroom they wanted to see. They would come to me and say, I'd really like to work on my classroom management style, so that I would direct them to a teacher to watch classroom management. I'd really like to work on my literacy, I would direct them to a literacy teacher. So we really did a lot of in-house kind of sharing of our strengths as professionals. So I was really, really proud about that.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of what Kristen said, there's a lot of similarities with the middle school too. You know, you mentioned Spelling Bee, you know, as well, and this was, you know, nice working. When we talk about a collaborative team, you know, we, we're, in the, in the fall, we had concerns with our students. Especially looking at their reading scores. So we have, we do diagnostic testing, we do it in the fall, winter. We just finished our last diagnostic test in math and ELA. So, you know, we are concerned, so we brought it up at admin. And we're able to talk about it and Lisa was like, oh, we have some COVID money. Let's look at possibility of getting an extra AIS teacher and it's been, it's really been beneficial for us. And even Kate, cause we can say, oh, we need this. Kate's like, oh, there's a grant for that. And we, you know, we can move forward with a lot of, a lot of things, which is nice. And another thing I want to mention, you know, again, with John and I working together. Cause we get different insight on different things, you know, in our guidance meetings. And this is, this is pretty powerful. So we met, I don't know, maybe mid-year with a, with a student. Struggling a little bit here and there with some academics, some behavior. And we worked together and created some high school mentors for some of our kids. And in this, in this particular case. John and I talked after the meeting today, very positive meeting, follow-up, student is doing very good. Grades are back where they should be, behaviors well, and, and we talked and you know, there's a lot of factors that go into it. But I really think having that positive mentor. And that's something we want to continue doing for next year.
I would say at the high school, a lot of our academic interventions, you know, were based around gaps in learning and kids were struggling. And I think it started, one of the best interventions I was in here, but last summer, we did the, we did our summer school, which normally is an online predator recovery. Last year we brought in a teacher, teaching assistant to come in and help supervise and help the kids manage those online summer school classes. It was so much more successful than it ever has been in the past and we're going to do that this summer. We also expanded our AIS and ELA for an after-school program, which we appreciated and I think was beneficial. We also, one of the bigger, bigger shifts we did was we moved our senior program into, for a majority of our students, our seniors, into ELA classes in the first half. I think that structure worked much better and allowed students more support. It was, I think you're more conscious of the program throughout the year because it was being discussed in the curriculum, in class every day. So I thought that was a great switch and I thought that the product showed that. We also, in the fourth quarter, were able to, because we have some relaxing of the rules. We were able to kind of split our study halls into a more relaxed study hall and then a more structured study hall for kids that were struggling. More guidance and, and that's something that now that some of our barriers are down, that's something that we're going to replicate right from the start next year. And then I'll just leave it with, I think, as Kristen said, I think that we recognize this summer is gonna be really our first opportunity in a few years. To really sit down and start talking about academics and where we go now. Because it just felt like we were very responding all the time, responding, responding, putting fire out, responding. Now I think we've learned a lot, we've seen a lot, we're gonna have some data here in a few weeks.
So commendation, as you're looking at the, reference the sort of the unfinished learning, the learning loss. Are we, how much gravity are we making up and how much do we have left to pay before we're back to, you know, sort of our academic standard?
So I, I don't know if I can answer that at the high school level definitively. I can tell you, we spent a lot of, I think a lot of our time this year was trying to get kids to come back to school on a regular basis. And I feel like we made tremendous progress with that. I think we knocked down a lot of, a lot of doors and I think that we helped families and helped kids get through the difficulty transitioning back to school. So I feel good about that, Fred. I, I will know more a little bit when we have our assessments, assessments. We take a look at what our region's results are. We never know what the state's gonna do with those.
Anecdotally, what I've seen, you know, from, from children I've worked with in coaching, but also from my own children. Is, is that it's been very successful in getting stool back in their heads in that way. Even high performing kids were, were disengaged, disheartened. But I know that even with that as the case, we're, we're missing four to six months of learning. Really concerned about those kids that were K through three, you know, during this pandemic. The foundation, about how they're gonna, how we are covering that gap.
Well, and I think that is one of the advantages to having an additional AIS teacher right now. I mean, and she's a great AIS teacher too, to boot, and having after-school AIS intervention. One of the things that we have talked about as a faculty, especially a primary faculty, is that when you really think about where your formative years are. Those students really didn't leave the house for two years and didn't experience the rich experiences that you probably provide your own children. When they were three, four, five, six. Our incoming kindergarten class, we can definitely see, after screening, some significant concerns about exposure. And it's because there just wasn't the ability to expose your children to things that we were able to pre-COVID. So yeah, so we have worked really closely as a faculty to try to identify those gaps. And actually, the teams have come up with great ways of sharing students. So it may be that you may not have me as a teacher, but I may teach you language arts for a couple of periods. Because I, that's my forte and I know what I can build on, whatever it is that you need. So we're, we're trying a whole bunch of things. I think the one thing that we recognized last year was that, and John kind of alluded to this. That we were all, everyone was hurting, I guess, for lack of a better term, including our teachers. And when we all kind of stepped back and, and they kind of let us know, we need your support, we need you to be visible, we need you to help us. That was our number one goal this year, was to give our teachers as much emotional support as we could. Because they are the frontline. And so we worked really hard to give our teachers the emotional support that they needed. And I think that, that will eventually, if not this year, really pay forward how students are doing. Because I just see that our staff feels like, think that kind of the cloud has lifted a little bit. And they're able to move forward and see progress in their students.
Fred, I, I also just want to say that I'm still concerned. But the, but the amount, but the amount of growth in a very short amount of time was pretty impressive. And that, that helps me deal with the problem that I wasn't, that I wasn't, that pretty much.
I'll, I'll go on record and say I'm very optimistic with the team, with teachers. I know that we can do this. Just trying to figure out how we take little bites of this element.
You know, I'm, I just want to follow up on, on that comment, Fred. You missed, just because you weren't here yet, our, our last academic update. And for primary and secondary, there were different takeaways, but in both cases. I'm not gonna say this was shared by everyone on the board, but I was thoroughly encouraged that we saw a cessation of free fall. And we saw some, some regain in some skills. It was, the data was clear on that. I'm very interested in comparing those numbers to our end-of-year finals. And I'm, I'm even just brainstorming right now, it would be really interesting to have that in time for our board workshop. But I, how fast do we normally collate those, those assessments?
We won't even get the state assessment scores back until probably September, if that.
Yeah, we'll have I-ready.
I-ready, I-ready we already have and I've actually.
Okay, so we'll have our internal assessments and any internal regions tests that we're not, that we don't have to wait on the state for.
Yeah.
And so we'll run with that and that sounds good. And I would definitely like to be looking at the AB.
I will tell you, before I came to this meeting, I pulled up the I-ready scores and, cause I know that they're just finishing them. And there has been steady growth from September to December to now, there's definitely growth. And I was, I was very pleased with the, the I-ready results, especially in language arts. So I'll share those.
It's nice at least, you know, between us and the state, one of us knows how to get these assessments done.
I just wanted to say that I remember that last academic update very, very well, stays in my mind. And I remember how everybody was just so struggling, the staff, that, you know, that you're worried about the kids. John, you mentioned you couldn't get them motivated. I mean, that was, that was where we were at. Nobody was motivated, hard to get them to school. And we were looking at the numbers and they were like behind two grades. So it sounds very encouraging right now because it sounds like, okay, we've stopped backpedaling and plugging the leaks. And we've made a lot of progress. So I can understand your optimism for next year. Because it sounds like everybody, and especially with the summer school program, is as full. As you're saying, that everybody is jumping in, especially the AIS club, that sounds fantastic. It sounds like everybody realizes that they need to kind of catch up and it sounds really great. I did want to ask you about the Panther Den. So originally, when you told us about it, it was more of a safe space. Kids were going to it because they were freaking out and they needed quiet place to go. As the year progressed and as they were, you know, coming out of their shell, has it become more of a social or academic? Or is it still more of a, just I need to retreat, I'm overwhelmed?
So the original intent of the Panthers Den or the Bright Room, the Bright program, is for kids who are in some kind of transition. So it's for kids who have high anxiety, it's for students who may be coming back after a hospitalization. We actually visited a school and they had a Bright Room that was just for students who were coming back from concussions. And so it, you really tailor, tailor it to your own school. Our Bright Room was for students who exhibit a lot of anxiety in school. Who may feel anxious in certain subjects, they would come to the Bright Room or the Bright, the Bright, the Panther's Den. Or the Panthers Teaching Assistant would go and support students in the classroom. We kind of abandoned that during COVID and it kind of became the room where if you were having a hard day, you would go. And that's not traditionally, there's a very long and very involved process to get into the Panther's Den, which is led by me. And we kind of abandoned that. It was kind of the place where not only students, but adults would go to when they were having a hard time. And now we are trying to come back to what the Panther's Den, an original intent was, like an alternative learning environment. We have seen a lot of students who are, this time of year, it is very common for fifth graders who are going to the middle school. Who will probably miss the elementary school and the, you know, the kind of the, the one classroom atmosphere. We see a lot of transition problems where they don't want to go. And so right now, we're dealing with a little bit of anxiety about going to the middle school. So there's a lot of kind of social circles going around about that. Mrs. Morgan runs different lunch groups for different reasons. She's very fluid with what it may be. There was a, some girl drama not too long ago, and so she kind of grabbed the lunch bunch and dealt with some fifth grade girl drama. And so, you know, we're very, very proud of our den and we're hoping to get it back to where it was. It's not what it initially was intended for, but the beauty of the den is, is that we're pretty, we go with the flow there. And it met a huge need and. I was very afraid that Sal was going to want me to abandon the den when COVID started because it was a classroom. And I remember going to him before he even asked me and I said, I don't want to abandon the den. And he said, I, we're not gonna abandon the den, because I was very afraid that because of COVID and it was a room and it was additional staff. And it's obvious that it had made a, so I very appreciative for that, but it's obvious that it had, it did fulfill a need for us.
So question about the, is there a plan or potential of it moving over to the middle?
Jumped in, we, so we have.
Did you pay him to ask that question?
I did, I did. Hey, after. We, we've been piloting, well, I shouldn't say piloting, we have, we've started in March at the middle school. And the, and the same thing, it's been great. And you know what, what makes it great is a person in the room. I wouldn't be able to say you could just get up and run it. You have to have the right person. And I think in the MED and at the middle school, we have the right people that are in there. That make the students who go to that room feel very comfortable and they, and they want to go. So you know, a success story for us with it is we've had a student who, we, we transitioned into the room. Anxiety, not wanting to come to school and next week, they're going back to class and they want to. They know that the teacher is there in the, in the Panther's Den if, if needed, but went, nope, I'm, I'm ready to go back to class. So yeah, so we've been doing that since March.
And I, I think Mike made a really important point that was kind of an epiphany for me when we had a school district, when Hyde Park came to visit us about our den. They, they've had several, they've sent several staff members over the course of the year. And you know, they were talking about, how do you transition somebody out? And I, and I kind of had an epiphany and I thought, you know, some of our students, they don't need to go to the den. But just the fact that they know the den is there in case they need it, makes them able to come to school. They might not go for the whole day, they might not go to the den at all that day. But just knowing, if I get so anxious that I can't perform in class, I know that I can go to my teacher and say, can I go to the den? And she will let me go. And I think that comfort alone keeps a lot of kids in school. And knowing that the den is there, it's an important, it's important for the whole building.
So I had a couple of the questions, if I could. You mentioned summer school, big response, which sounds great. I'm just wondering if there's any comparative to other years, are we noticing like a massive response? Or just where you would hope it would be? I'm just wondering the, the level of response.
Sure, they're not due back until, the complete responses aren't due back until this Friday. But I would say that right now, we probably have the same amount of kids that we had last year, which was a lot. But I do know that I've had several parents reach out to me and say, hey, can you send that paperwork home again? I can't find it. So I'm anticipating we're gonna be a little bit higher amount than we had last year. I would say right now, we're somewhere around 40 students, which is pretty good. And then once we get all of the summer school responses back, then we sit down and make the program. Because we really want to base it on academic needs. So they're there, they're with us for three hours. So the first hour is always something fun. They do something as a whole huge group. And they always centered around some kind of activity. Last year, I think it was last year or the year before, it was about the Olympics. So then they do one big culminating activity every morning. And then the rest of the time, they're broken up according to academics. And it may not be that you are academically with your same age peers. It may be if you're a first grader performing at a fourth grade level, you're gonna go with some fourth graders. If you're a fourth grader who's struggling a little bit, you may go with some third graders. So it's all based on their academic level, skill level. If you're a fourth grader who's struggling a little bit, you may go with some third graders. So it's all based on their academic level, skill level. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so going back to the high school, just a few questions, um, graduation stats, where are we at the moment? How are we looking?
We are where we were last time. Those five kids that are, that were in question, um, I think, uh, I feel pretty good about three of them. Pushing, pulling, prod and poking for the other two. It's, it's really where we are. Um, I, I, I worry about two.
And I think compared to other years, that seems to be somewhat in line, would you say?
Very much. We've had, we've had every kid make it and we've had, you know, we've had up to five or six.
Can I piggyback off that, Chris? What's our dropout?
Uh, we've had, we had two seniors who gave up on it, uh, early in school. And they're, they're not, they were not surprised as they were families and students that we had worked with for years, going back all the way through the system. Was, was not for lack of effort. Just sometimes what happens over years and years and years of struggle. Families wear down and, uh, the tail legs are gone a little bit and.
I, I also think the statistics are not terrible.
You know, I, 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 by and large, I feel, it's not, listen, everyone feels like a loss. Every kid doesn't make it across or that leaves the, the, to me, feels like a loss. But by and large, when you look at over years, yes, I think we are, we're, we're doing a pretty nice job. And I think we, we really work hard, hard for, you know, if there's a couple individuals that don't get across, we do everything that we can to, to, to rectify that by the end of the summer. So that'll be our, that'll be our goal.
Uh, cell phones.
Sure.
You know, there was a. Uh, Chris, before we go into cell phones, I just like to back up on the, the graduation rates.
Sure.
Um, I, I'm feeling good about those numbers, John. I'm more concerned, and I know that these numbers are fraught with difficulty, right? What, what's the standard measure? It's, it's nine through 12 September is how they measure it. It's the four-year graduation rate. They have one for August and one for September. That, that, that's how it works.
I can't remember exactly, but it's, I think you're right.
We, we, we lose kids, we lose kids, we lose a couple at the end every year, right?
We can, yes.
But we lose them at other times too.
Yes.
Um.
Very true.
And it's sort of beyond the scope of normal academic intervention to do something about it because we're going to lose those kids anyway, probably. There's probably nothing we can do. What I worry about as a community member is that, and I'm looking at the county here. Um, but it's a little bit our responsibility too. Um, these are children that are entering adulthood early without, um, without a diploma, without a college track, probably without professional education. They may be at risk for other reasons. I, I, I wish we had a, someplace to funnel them to. I wish we had some, some service at the county level that we could, um, be communicating with to do handoffs, to do soft handoffs, even if it's no longer our responsibility, especially if they disenroll. There's really nothing we can do at that point because we're no longer even, um, able to really academically engage them after a disenrollment. But that doesn't mean that they're not still community members here. And I, I feel it's our responsibility. We are the only ones in the community that know these kids didn't graduate. So we. But, but, but there's nothing out there. I, I call around all the time. Uh, this is like a constant thing when I'm dealing with people in the county. I always ask about this. That's, that's the angle I look at about this. So I'm just tabling it because we're talking about dropout rates. Um, so all you board members out there, like.
Just so, just so you know, Matt, those are the conversations that we try to have with, you know, we try to talk about what, what the options are and how limited they really are. And, you know, so that, that's something that we try to work with these, with, with kids and families about it. You know, we talk about job role and time. And that's a, you know, that, that's not going to work for every kid, you know, that, that, that the kid's got to go to a job corps facility and they have to go onsite. They have to live there for six, for six months. It's not for everybody.
No, we.
So the options are very limited.
We do have a workforce development office, right? Co-located with the, uh, the college, maybe getting them to re-enroll, re-enroll. But, but really, um, it's here in the county. That's their job. Um, unfortunately they're sort of running on the state formula, which ignores this problem entirely. I keep calling them up to ask and they're just like, I don't know what to do about it.
It would be phenomenal if we had a connection with somebody that we can work with.
Yep. Um, but anyway, that was my comment on that. Um, cell phones.
Well, I just, I just wanted to follow up to see, you know, it's such a difficult topic. And I feel like, you know, we're all trying to grasp the concept behind how to address it because it's new to everyone. But I'm just wondering from your perspective, um, have you seen a change in behavior since, you know, the policy has been, I would say enforced?
Well, I, I didn't make any changes at the high school with cell phones. But that was not part of our reset. We didn't reset anything with cell phones at middle school. That was part of the middle school discussion. That was not, that was not.
Oh, I thought there was a notice that, when that.
We spoke, I mean, we spoke about the fact that cell phone, you know, we spoke about trying to eliminate distractions. We talked about, we spoke a lot about trying to maximize our opportunities. Students are here and that's why we, we, uh, changed the study hall structure. We made a support structure, study hall, um, options for kids. Uh, but cell phones at the high school weren't, weren't one of the focuses. That was more of a focus at the middle school. I think it's an ongoing discussion at the high school.
Well, I mean, the, the.
So at the high school, the way it works right now is students are, they're not supposed to have them out during class. They're allowed to use them during, at the, in the library. They're used up, allowed to use them during lunch. They're allowed to use them if they're not in instruction study.
But, but the reality is, is that happening?
Um, I would say that it's, it's some, some teachers handle it very well. Some teachers have struggled with it. This has been a, it's been an ongoing issue for fifteen years. The only schools that I know who have successfully won the battle are the ones that don't have service. It, it's a very tough battle to fight because you've got a couple of different things. You've got, you've got families who very much want to be able to get in touch with their child. And they don't want to have to go to secondary. They want to be able to contact their child. Um, we, they listen, they're all, we all are, are, are guilty as charged. Cell phones are an issue, not just for kids. They're an issue. They're an issue in general. But I don't have the answer.
No, I'm, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand.
So I think it's, you know, I think that can cell phones be a distraction? Yes, they can be. Um, I think some teachers manage it beautifully. It's never an issue. Other people have.
But.
You know, I think a lot of that depends on you are as a person and how you structure it and how much you emphasize it. And how clearly and how much you follow up on that and are consistent.
So would, would you say, would you say across the four grades that ninety percent of the students are actively, you know, like I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I would say a hundred percent of the students are engaged in their cell phones.
A hundred percent?
Hundred percent.
That's, I mean, it's staggering to hear that.
And I'd say that's been that way for since cell phones.
No, I don't think that's, at, at least from.
I, I, that's my experience.
I, I'm just saying from my personal children who have been in school, they have noticed a major uptick in cellphone usage.
Uh.
Since COVID.
Could, could very well be. I, I, I mean, I've been in, been here in ten years though, having the same exact conversation when it was a massive issue. So for me, this is not a new thing and it's, I don't, I, I don't, I don't see an uptick. What I do see, what I do see is, where I do see an uptick is not necessarily in the distraction in class. Where I see a big uptick is when you have, uh, a, a, an open area, say it's a, an open, open study hall with, with kids who can converse and have that freedom to do that. And instead of necessarily being involved in conversation, they're here. That I see all the time and that's concerning as well. But a hard nut to crack. You look at, when, when we were in the, when we were in lunch and we had them at desks in rows, which was awful. Um, and it was, you know, it looked kind of hard for them to, but you would go in there and you'd see a couple of kids talking, but the majority of them would be there.
I mean, that's, that's true anywhere in the world right now, right? And that's.
But that, but that's what we're seeing. And, and it's, it's the socialization. That's what, I'm sure that cell phones are a pain in the butt to a lot of teachers. I know, I know this. But I'm more concerned about their inability, some kids' inability to have face-to-face communication.
I'm equally concerned, and I'm concerned about that, but I'm equally concerned about, you know, kids absorbing this, this studying material because if.
Chris.
Percentage of our kids, you know, if they're just on their phones. That is impacting our, you know, our ability to teach our kids and, um, you know, I, it's just a major concern of mine. Uh, and I don't have any concern. I don't know how to evolve out of it. I think the reason why I bring it up is I think it's something we should look further into somehow. Um, but I don't know what the answer is. I just think it's a topic that we should, um.
I've thought of cell phones as an indicator rather than a problem.
Say again?
I, I think of cell phones as an indicator rather than a problem itself. So, you know, if, if you get twenty kids together and have a structured activity, volleyball, soccer, baseball, uh, a play. Cell phones are not an issue. They're engaged in the activity that speaks to them, that, that is, that is by definition engaged. It's when that, that level of engagement or a sense of individualization comes around that the cell phones become more prominent. They're an indicator, I think, of whether the activity is intended to be social, how social and purposefully social. So if you, if you're doing something that is, that is engaging to all kids, I mean, I took, I, I was fortunate enough to go on a senior class trip just this past week. Nineteen seniors. Every time we're sitting around for dinner at the fire, there were cell phones out. But we played volleyball for like four hours and nobody even thought about it. And I think to the structure of the activity, if the cell phones are out, it's an indicator that it's not an engaging moment. It doesn't always have to be an engaging moment. But it's, it's, I think it's an indicator of that rather than a problem that causes it.
But I'm specifically talking about class instruction. I'm talking about in the classroom.
Yeah. I would agree with.
That is, you know.
Chris.
We're not talking about a.
I, I, I just, I just remind, um, the group here, we don't really have the ability to, um, we can't stop cellphone signal. We can't take the phones away physically. We've got, we've got some, some, some options there, but they're, they're difficult, right? Basically, we can't take the phones away. Fred's right about engagement being, and, and culture of cellphone use and what's acceptable, right? Um, but I, it sounded like maybe there was a, a note about the middle school that we should touch on.
Yeah, I, I just want to, I absolutely, I just want to.
There's another dimension I want to add to, to it as well. And, um, John, if this is a fair statement, because I may have confused the, what had happened at the middle school, the high school, but the one thing that I believe did happen at the high school, whether it was soft or hard, was a reaff, reaff, uh, reaffirmation that administration would support the classroom teacher, uh, in terms of what happened in the classroom. So if a teacher found that a student was being disrespectful or not following the rules, then they were reminded that there was a process in place in terms of a disciplinary procedure. So is that a fair, is that a fair? So again.
Now is my exact initial question is I'm wondering if that actually was successful.
All I can tell you is that I did not get one referral this entire year on cell phone.
Okay.
That's a bit of a perennial process you need to go through on a cellphone reminder, right?
Agreed.
So what does that mean? Does that suggest potentially that teachers have realized, decided, absorbed?
I think it's a hard battle to fight. And I think that probably, um, I think we're now, it'll, it'll be here. I think that probably nobody comes in right away.
There may also be an, an integration by teachers that's evolving.
Oh, I agree with that. I think some teachers utilize, some, some teachers utilize cell phones all the time. They, they do trivia. They do all kinds of, and kids are right there using, people use it as a tool all the time. I know one teacher who, who was left, Terry Cordell, all the time. He would say, get your cell phones up, look it up. All the time. So he would, he would actively use them in his lesson. Um, and I think people who embrace that have successful results with it.
And at the middle school, so, uh, no cell phones in the classroom unless it's teacher discretion. And we said, no, no cell phones in the hallways. They can use it at lunch. We haven't had any issues. The cellphone, I mean, a lot of time you'll still see, there's, you know, you'll still catch a kid fumbling, you know, and you're like, what do you, what do you got?
But no chronic phones or something.
No, no. And you know, but if someone abuses it, they get, they'll get a warning. If they continue it, we talk with the parent and they, they can bring it in and leave it. So they can leave it in the front office. So it's there. So they can pick it up. They can drop it off in the morning when they leave it. At the end of the day, it's there for them. But what I see is that the biggest issue with cell phones is between the hours of like six P M. and three in the morning. So, and, and we get phone calls from parents. My child was on Snapchat at four in the morning and, you know, what do I do about it? It's the, it's the education.
Restrictions on those things?
But, but that's it. It's the education about all the different apps and, and a new app pops up the next day. And, you know, that's, I think, the biggest struggle. It's not so much in school. It's when they're, they're left with their devices by themselves is where there's, I see majority of the trouble.
Thirteen years. And all of these things were an issue even back then with our own kids. And you could see what was coming. And parents would say, well, why do I, and you know, there are certain things that parents still need to do for themselves. The school isn't responsible for every piece of their children's growing up. I mean, I remember having to, in first grade, sometimes having to do potty training. Now, that should not be a skill that a first grade teacher should be working on, but I did, just because the parents hadn't done it. And there's just a lot of them who are still thinking that they can throw it on the school to do everything. And if, you know, parent wants to know about it, it's something at four A M. That's on your clock. You deal with it. It's not the school's problem.
I dropped some tech notes. We've got a bunch of geeks in the room here. Um, firstly, I believe we, we've been running without, without public wifi and we're thinking of coming back to public wifi. Is that right?
Once we, um, once Mike supervises our new installation of our, uh, E-rate funding and our new, uh, access points, we're going to be able to reestablish that.
The, the reason I bring that up is clearly, um, it would be unrealistic to expect that there's no leakage onto our private network with, with, with private devices that, that ultimately is, is happening. It's, you know, there's, there's a password that floats around, right? But we're, we're looking at updates to wifi. Um, we used to have public wifi. We disabled it because we had, we had some challenges on the network, right? Which we, which we were fighting because it resulted in, um, school closures, actually. Uh, we weren't able to operate. We will be reopening that public device wifi. It's something to watch in terms of what impact that has on cellphone usage. But the other thing, and, and I'm not aware that this has been an actual topic. At least it hasn't happened in the years that I've been here on the board, looking at, do we want to make decisions on classes of applications that we deny in the buildings? And it wouldn't be, I'm, I'm not talking about communication technologies that would stop parents from talking to their children. Um, but you know, it's, it's social media distraction that we're actually talking about. We're not talking about cell phones. We're talking about social media distraction. And if that's a problem. And it, and it's, if it's, it's not solvable with technology, but if it's addressable with technology, there should be a conversation about that. And probably over the course of the summer is the right time to have that, that conversation here in the board. Um, and clearly down in the district teams as well. Especially as we're going to be reopening the wifi, um, we should set expectations. Uh, with that, we got, got a whole agenda here and, uh, and.
I only had one more question if I could. And, and that was just going back to the wellness thing across district. Um, and maybe if we think about it through the lens of the high school, uh, I'm just, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of stuff that's happened in our country recently and I don't know if, you know, students of any age have, you know, if there's been any notice of any behavioral change or concern or anything different, you know, since of these recent things, maybe nothing, maybe something. I'm just, I'm just wondering how, what's going on around us that's filtered into our school and how that might inform us as to how we.
Yeah, you know, um, whenever something happens, you know, um, we think about the tragedy in Texas. One of the first things I know I did, I was on the cellphone with my guidance team. Um, and we're just talking about strategies in place and we email the faculty in case someone brings something. someone brings something up or isn't comfortable in class. Cause we, we prefer to have our guidance counselors talk to those students instead of having open discussions in class. Um, just because too, we don't know who doesn't know what's going on in the world. In class. So we try to, you know, uh, send that to our teachers who then lets our guidance team know. You know, I, I wouldn't say, I can't think of anything recently, um, where we've had any issues in, in school. Um, I don't know.
It's a little different with me because we have classes who will actively are taking these discussions at my level. And have really great discussions about it. So it's a totally different animal for me. I don't have the same fear factor. It's not, it's not the same. It's different. She's been an advocate, right? It's all the way for students to fantastic work.
In the elementary school, I am very clear that what a student knows will only come from home. And that if it becomes, if somebody addresses something in a classroom, they need to immediately seek out a guidance counselor, we call mom and dad, but that's not something that the teachers in the elementary school discuss with students. It's just not appropriate. We made a conscious effort for the last few weeks and for the last many years, actually, to be, and especially this past week, to be as normal and happy and engaging and loving and kind as we could be in case there was anyone who was worried. And we did have a few, um, of the older students, fifth graders, um, but not to the degree when this happened ten years ago. Um, that was a really difficult time. This time, um, I think we were a little better mentally. We knew what we wanted to do going into the next day. Yes. Yeah. And, you know, I, we immediately had email chains with us and text chains and email chains and text chains with our teacher leaders about what the day was going to look like and, and it was going to be absolutely as normal as possible. And there was going to be increased, you know, people at different areas and different places and, but I will say that I had heard from a lot of parents that there was a lot of thank yous to the staff for being as normal as possible and that it was, you know, they understood that it was probably a difficult day, but that we just, it was, it was a, another day for us. We were going to do what we always did.
Well, thanks for the updates. Um, I'm not sure that we've had a, an update that felt that bright in a while.
Yeah.
So I hope you guys are feeling it in your day to day because I'm hearing it right here. That's great. Um, does anyone else have a year end or go into policy? All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, you can send one this way. Okay. So Pat, um, we'll do a quick policy committee standup and then do you want to present the, um, the policies as well? And I, I've got a comment, but wait, uh, so what's, what's new? What's coming up? I don't, I don't think we're going to do detailed Q and A. But I'll, I'll, I'll read the numbers in a minute.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Uh, just, just the policy committee standup and then we'll go into the reading, but the.
The policy committee, we've actually had a rather difficult time. Okay. Now, can you hear me? Um, the policy committee has had a rather difficult time with last couple of months getting together because of scheduling conflicts. So we had to postpone April to May. Uh, we finally, a few of us managed to get together on, on, um, Friday. So essentially what we're doing was really the last meeting of the year and it was kind of, we ended up pushing off some finalizing or working on some of the policies, uh, till next year, um, because we just didn't have enough time for discussion. And also, um, we have some concerns about when we get sample policies of actually changing wording without really knowing what the repercussions might be because there is just so much law and, and it, uh, just a lot and such a matter of experts that, uh, are involved in developing the sample policies by this, that for us to go in and maybe change wording may have some implications. So we have to be very careful. And we really haven't had the time to sit down with them and have some substantive discussions. So we postponed a few of the policies over to next year to when we do our, the compliance review. We have engaged NISBA to do that. We are going to engage NISBA to do that. Uh, we also decided to expand that compliance review to include numbering of the policies just to save time so we could focus on the real core of the policies and not have to spend time on some of the admin side of things. So, uh, we made that, uh, that, uh, final decision last Friday. And the only two policies that we did change, which we have for first reading, there were simple amendments that were overlooked a couple of years ago. And to change, when we changed the committee of the board from nine to seven, we had to have, uh, change obviously some of the policies and the quorum from five to four. So that's really the only amendments we made to these policies, uh, which you had in the synopsis. We're probably very happy that they were very short, a very simple comparison, our prior, uh, policy reading. So that's where we're at. And, uh, it was our last meeting of the year. Uh, and we're looking forward to next year, which is going to be obviously the complete brief, brief review of all the policies, which we're going to, uh, let NISBA take the lead on that and then work with them once they come up with their recommendations.
So, so, so NISBA, um, do, do we have a start date on their work yet? Um, do we know when they're expected to deliver? When are they starting?
So we, we, we have a contract, we're under, we're getting the contract finished up now and a purchase order in. It's coming out of next budget year. And in anticipation of that in a couple of weeks, we're, uh, they can go right into the backend because they have access to, uh, Word docs. Word docs is facilitated through them. So Debbie's working with them to, to stage that. Um, I believe they said it could take, um, uh, wasn't it eight to 10 weeks? Yeah. So it could take them.
Okay. So they're already sort of rolling.
And, you know, one of the problems we, we have in heavy ride along is we, we had our existing old policies and a couple of years ago, we.
Thanks, Brian.
We, we did a, a full review based on those theories and those are so different. We tried to incorporate them into our existing policy structure. And then we were working with NISBA too, and it's really been very difficult. We, I think this is going to be a fresher start, even though we have over the last couple of years done a lot of cleanup. I think letting NISBA take the lead, do the compliance review, come up with what they think, you know, the changes should be and what policies should be in there versus maybe there are policies in there that we maybe don't need, uh, or definitely may, probably need to be updated that we just haven't gotten around to updating. So I think this is going to be a fresh start and hopefully the end product after all this is going to be a lot better in terms of a policy manual for easy reference.
So, um, after our org meeting, meeting, um, which is coming up, we're gonna do our annual, uh, committee review and figure out who's on what committee. Um, and we, this was the last meeting for policy for the year. Um, do you think that last year's policy maybe, meeting, when was the first meeting last year?
We started, yeah, I think in, end of September, early October is when we usually, usually.
Does that, does that seem good?
And, oh, yeah. And, um, at this point in time, I, I think it's NISBA thinking they're going to have something for us by September, October.
That's, yes.
So it'll be, it'll, it'll, if, by turning them on now, they'll have something for us early in the fall.
Okay. And then, and then clearly, you know, in terms of an actual adoption plan, uh, it's probably too early to talk about details there, but we're thinking extended review and then adoption, or we're going to batch it? Or we don't know yet?
I guess really depends on how the committee decides, you know, to, uh, approach it. I would say based.
It's difficult because they may end up getting all tangled up.
It, it may be totally renumbered and all that. So I, it's hard to say. And obviously we do have some policies that we have worked, you know, that are really district unique, that we're going to have to try to make sure that we understand how they're going to fit. If we're going to keep them and how are they going to fit into it.
So I think what I'm hearing, um, and this may turn into a legal question, um, is we're going to be a, a little bit of a, uh, in, in like a holding pattern, probably making minimal changes to policy except as absolutely required until we're really ready to, to tackle what's going to be a very large project. It's, it's really not going to probably net any results in earnest until the new year.
Well, you know, last time it was like two years before we actually finally, you know.
Yeah. But in the meantime, we're not going to be wanting to engage in a lot of policy work. It's just going to get thrown out, right? So, um, clearly like these examples, and we're going to read them in, in a minute, like eleven, twenty, fifteen, ten, there's like some minor like updates that just had to happen.
But they're, but they're unfortunate. You know, they're, these are policies really that are so, you know, you go back to reference, you could, you know, to, um, ensure you know what the quorum is or whatever. So these are simple fixes. And they're not going to change. Now, you know, we, you know, maybe based on NISBA's approach, they may move sections to another, whatever, but the basic policy shouldn't change.
How, how's our community participation going? Are we, uh, do we have burnout yet? Do we need to start soliciting more community support?
Well, I think normally, we, we do requests beginning of the year for participation on the.
And I think, I think there's another dimension since we have our, one of our school attorneys, um, sitting in the audience here. That is, my hope is that NISBA, we, we really are, the quagmire is, uh, for the last couple of years was the juxtaposition of the Erie one verbiage and the NISBA verbiage and Erie one numbering. And it just, it, so kind of level setting all of this and getting back to a base. But at the end of the day, um, my hope is they can provide us a change control document that we can share with our own attorneys to, to do a fact check on, you know, the policies that NISBA is recommending that we make changes to. Because at the end of the day, I would want, um, Chris and the team at Urban to over, you know, overlook, oversee, um, the recommendations because we've put a lot of time and effort to getting to this point. And we, we, there are some policies that the committee spent a lot of time on and it got to the point where they are where we want them to be. So they're.
Yeah. I'm just thinking we, we probably need to think a little bit harder about, like maximum support to the policy team in the upcoming year versus the year we just had.
But, you know, I'm not surprised. You know, it's not so much the number of people, it's the time.
Right. The, the type of support, right?
You know, it's a time, yeah. Can, how much time can we devote any point in time to, uh, discussing an issue? Can, uh, communicating with the subdramatic experts, the, the legal team.
I, I can't think of other committees where we need to be thinking more specific about change to the way we form the committee, but I would love like a paragraph maybe or a couple of bullets on, um, guidance for the incoming, um, board chair as they compose the, uh, the committees, right? Uh, whoever it is, right? Like he's going to need instructions. And I think some recommendations from the previous committee would be, would be helpful there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, you know, and actually we have started on our, our tele drive. We do have, I, I have put together available to the other team members, committee members, uh, some of things in terms of, uh, some of the areas that we want to maybe develop policy or seeing a new policy or, uh, on, uh, and various approaches. How, you know, in terms of approaching the manual, uh, naming conventions and things like that. So, so we, we have a start on it.
I was thinking beyond the procedure towards the selection of the committee, making, making sure that the committee gets the, the support it needs, right?
Yeah, I know. We've never really had a problem with getting, getting the, unnumbered people for the committee. It's really actually finding the time to meet in enough a block of time. Half an hour, an hour is not, per meeting is not usually sufficient for discussion and, and delving through, you know, everything.
All right.
Yes, please.
So this is a board member not understanding exactly how this works. So is there a legal requirement to have an outside? Like, well, like you said, Erie one was the verbiage you were using before. It sounds like you're transitioning to a NISBA model instead. So is there, so school districts have like a legal requirement to have, you know, like, I guess it's all associated with this compliance review. Is, is that what makes us use outside vendors?
They're service, they're service providers. And honestly, for us as laymen to try to develop a policy with all the legal references that, that would apply to any one policy, that's just beyond.
Yeah.
So it's not a requirement. It is just because it's already been decided legally.
Essentially, you know, they, you know, they have such a matter of experts. They have attorneys that specialize in, you know, in this various areas. So. Oh, definitely, definitely.
I'd like to comment here. I'd also like Dr. D'Angelo to comment on that one, but I, it ultimately comes down to resourcing. We would have to be a very large district to keep our legal costs and compliance costs proportionally like in, in the reasonable range to do this ourselves. Like clearly New York City can do this themselves, right? Maybe some of the other larger districts do more of it themselves, but I think, um, you know, even, even New York City, like they're looking at what LA is doing, right? Like they're looking at what upstate New York school districts are doing too. Um, it's, it's all sort of, everyone's informing everyone else because it's hard.
So who runs the compliance review? Who are we answering to in the compliance review?
We don't answer to anybody. We are contracting with New York State School Boards Association, who offers that as a service to take a look at our existing policy. And say, here is a law on X, Y, Z. Here's your policy on that. This policy fits the law. You're, you're good. Check that one off. Here's a place where we feel like you, the, the law has changed and you have not updated your policy and you're exposed. So then that comes back to the policy committee and in conjunction with our own school attorney, will decide, um, what changes that, that the board ultimately approves. I, I look at it as, you know, NISBA, there's seven hundred and some odd districts in the state, all of which need a policy on X, Y, Z. So rather than seven hundred districts going on their own and trying to figure out a policy, here's a base policy that an organization, um, will provide. Then we customize it to, to the extent that we feel we need to make, in consultation with our school attorney, fits our own needs. And then ultimately the purpose for the board to review it is to agree with that. So it's really kind of, you know, getting us from from one to seven by borrowing a sample policy, customizing it, running it by our own school, uh, school council. And then, and then the board having a chance to adopt it. That's.
But also.
We misunderstood the compliance review part. So that's basically a checklist. They go through and they look at all of our.
They're going to look at all the required, there are required policies a district has to have, and then there's many other policies that district chooses to have. So I, my assumption is they're going to take, first, they're going to make sure that we are in compliance with all the required policies. And that all those policies are up to date in terms of, uh, points of law, right? And then from that point forward, uh, make recommendations for which we would run by our own council. I mean, I don't want to go too down, far down a rabbit hole, but one example is one of the recent policies that we, um, that was far outside of our, um, expertise. We, we ran by our, our school attorney and. In the case, we recommend the board adopt this policy. It's provided to you by the state. It's, it's the highest defensibility because how can the state say that you didn't abide by their own policy? Then there might be something that's more, more germane to the way. Then there might be something that's more, more germane to the way Chatham operates, right? And, and then that's where you, the board has some discretion over modifying the policy and then, and then consulting with the attorney that we're not creating something that is not interpretable, I guess is the way.
And then you have those ones that are sort of like, like the code of conduct, which is required.
Yep.
Has boilerplate language, but then has nuances of Chatham involved in it.
And nuances is a good, good word to use.
I think I, I'd just like to put some perspective out there since you haven't been to any policy meetings and how the committee operates. And, but Sal's sort of glossing over the fact that while changes in law or notices from the state, updates, policy changes from the state, or maybe notices from our attorneys, or in this case, we're doing this, we're actually paying a consultant to read every word in our policies and check it all, right? Which hasn't been done in a while by a professional to methodically go through every single policy. While they drive a lot of action, the, I've been here four-ish years. The board membership has been the primary driver on actually doing the work, right? Forming the verbiage. In, in conjunction, we've always had a community member on that, that committee. And that's before it even gets here where we all to varying depths, review the policy and give our feedback and we get some from the community and then it goes back to a reauthoring stage. Where also along the way, we're getting opinions from legal, we're getting opinions from the district and preferences from the district. And so it's, it's a very collaborative process and the board's very involved and board members are, and this is one of our primary functions, right? But the, but, but the reality is that the law dictates the vast majority of the policies, all of them. We have in, we have the ability, we just used the word nuance. I think of it as we basically have the ability to step, two steps to the left and two steps to the right on many topics. And we, we use that judiciously in every single policy we write. We think about what's right for Chatham. But there's a limit to, you know, how far we can push things one way or another. That's, you know, reasonably expected and in line with other, other schools are doing. But we, we certainly are not on autopilot on this. So with that, Pat, any other committee updates or should we go into the readings and I'll do, do a quick summary? Ready? Okay. So we're reading into policies tonight for first reading. Policy 1120, BOE qualifications, numbers, terms of office, as well as 1510, regular board meetings and rule. There were some required changes here. On 1120, I'm just reading from the synopsis here, which is, I believe it's, yes, it's publicly available. These were the existing policies with just a couple of changes. So under qualifications, we found through the course of the year, the town supervisor is one of the things that are incompatible with a board member. We had to remove that or we had to add that as a incompatible public office. We had to update the number of members paragraph from nine board members to seven. And we had to update the, we had to talk about how we stagger the terms of office. And then in 1510, we had to update the quorum paragraph from five members down to four members because our quorum with a seven member board is only four members. I think we, we had one board member comment, which I'm just gonna leave with you, Pat. And if you want me to put this in email, I can, but it's, I will, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you right now anyway. On 1510, which is the quorum and parliamentary procedure. And this is actually not the first time that I've been made aware of this because we've been over this document before. At least I've read it before. But on page three, there's this language about what we're not supposed to have in a public session in terms of comments. And there's, it's just basically a run-on sentence that needs a grammar fix. And I think that I'll just copy and paste that and send it to you and I think that's gonna be a very simple one.
I didn't catch that.
It, it's, you know, you could, you could catch it or not catch it depending on how you read the sentence. You know, that's, that's how run-on works, but in any case, I'll, and this is like, clearly the sentence has been here a while, right? But I'll send you a note on that while we're updating this policy. And with that, does anyone else have any comments? Clearly we're gonna have a couple of weeks here before we do second reading, but, and there wasn't much here, but anything on? All right. We're gonna go right on to our next motion. So R73, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Chatham Central School resolved that the Board of Education approve a $3,000 stipend for the superintendent's administrative assistant for COVID responsibilities for the 2022, 2023 school year. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments on R73? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and we're gonna go into consensus agenda. R74, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda L through N as written. Can I have a motion? I have a quick comment. I would, you know, really like to thank the HRBT Foundation for awarding us a grant for library services. It was $10,000. That's very kind. It's really, it really helps out. You know, as, as the public attending may or may not be aware, we are responsible for funding the, the public library, which is somewhat unique in Chatham. So that's, that's pretty special. Does anyone else have questions or comments on L through N? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And items for future agenda? Anything new that someone wants to floor today? Okay, flying right through here. So we're back to second public comment. If we have any public left, if you indicate with a digital raised hand or if you'd like to step forward and speak, we'll give you a couple of minutes if you'd like to speak on any issues pertaining to the Chatham Central School District. We certainly can.
Ben, are you here observing or did you, were you gonna speak or? Okay, well.
Congratulations, by the way.
You probably were in transit, but you missed our congratulations to you for being our valedictorian.
Thanks for that catchmural. Well, this is government in action, so.
I don't know, Ben. This is kind of close to the end of the school year. Cutting it off real close, huh? Okay, all right. We do have
We have one hand.
Hey Sandy, we can see and hear you.
Alrighty, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Um, so this was a long meeting and I had a long list of things that I wanted to talk about, but I'm gonna keep it short just because it's two hours into the meeting. But I just, I think it's important to know that, you know, people who are watching the meetings, like me, wear many hats. And so, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this meeting as a community member, as an alumni, as a parent, as a teacher, as a teacher leader. And so, you know, listening to the conversations, you know, many hats are, are whirling in my head. And there's, and there's much that I, that I'd like to say and, and to talk about. But to keep it brief, I just want to congratulate Mia on her great job as the Board of Representative for the student population. I think that's one of the things that makes Chatham special. That we recognize student voice and that we promote student voice and encourage student voice. And I'm glad that Chatham takes this seriously and, and listens to Mia and, and, and Dr. D'Angelo. Meeting with Mia and working on different initiatives that, that's important to her, I think is, is hugely important. And that's like, you know, all year I talked about what makes Chatham special. And this is one of the things that makes Chatham special. Another thing was listening to Kristin Reno talk about things happening at the elementary school. As a high school teacher and a teacher leader, we don't get to hear any of that. And I think as a, as a moving forward, I think it's hugely important for teacher leaders and, and the whole faculty to be able to celebrate in district successes, whether it's a district faculty meeting or individual building meetings. I think hearing the great things that are happening at each of the individual schools is important because it energizes us. I mean, I'm energized and I'm excited and, and it makes me think of things that, you know, I could be doing differently to make a better impact on students in the high school. So I think that that's something that moving forward, we should, we should work collaboratively as a district to do. Also, you know, I'm, I'm super excited hearing the questions and the hard discussions that the, that the board members are having. And I've mentioned this at several meetings and I think having the liaison committee again is hugely important because that will bring teachers from all three buildings together with board members to have discussions. You know, whether it's about the cell phones, because, you know, we've got a lot to say about cell phones. You know, just so that there's more of a, a sort of the boots on the ground discussions happening with, with teachers and with the, the Board of Education members and with admin. You know, I, I think that that's hugely important. And also I want to put a plug out for tomorrow night, the expo night and awards night. It really is a huge community celebration of our seniors and, and I hope that, that the board members will be able to come. And I know as a teacher, I don't get to teach every, every kid in the school and, and being able to look at these boards and, and get a glimpse at, at what happens in their personal lives and what achievements they've made in their time at Chatham is, is rewarding. And, and I love it and it's, it's a great experience. So I, I hope that you guys will be able to come tomorrow night to that at six o'clock in the auditorium or in the gymnasium and then at the auditorium. But thank you. Thank you, guys. I know, you know, it's a, it's a lot of work. It's a thankless job and we appreciate everything that you do. And I'll sign off.
Okay, thanks Sandy. I guess we got mics. Get full duplex sound going now? That's new. Okay, do we have any other public with a hand, digital hand or? If, if you did have a comment, anyone public, feel free to just click the button. I'll give you a couple of seconds here. Okay. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. So we, we've got a few different situations that fit the category of a particular individuals, employment matters. So they're all employment, right? Okay, so be it resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session. Can I have a motion? Questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Does anyone want clerk pro tem or I can take it? We're gonna have a, a moment with just board members, I think. All right. Can we have a motion to appoint Matthew Fish as district clerk pro tem for the executive session? Questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And we're in executive session, right? I didn't miss a thing here? Okay.